Gracias a todos por venir hoy a la reunión de Energy Resource Fair en town. Si aún no lo han hecho, por favor, siéntense. Espero que hayan aprendido mucho hoy de la feria de recursos aquí en esta sala. También tenemos exhibiciones de exterior, incluyendo un exposición de E.V., que pueden visitar después del programa de discursos. Y también tenemos talleres, así que por favor, se unan a nosotros para ellos. Comenzarán a las 1:15. Ahora, sin más preámbulos, nos gustaría comenzar el programa de discursos. Y me gustaría presentar al senador Bernie Sanders.
Gracias. Muchas gracias. Gracias a todos por venir para estudiar y pensar y aprender sobre una cuestión de consecuencias masivas para el estado de Vermont, para Estados Unidos y, de hecho, para el mundo. Y déjame agradecer a nuestros panelistas que van a estar hablando justo después de mí, Olivia Campbell Anderson con Renewable Energy Vermont y Lee Ling Young con Efficiency Vermont, Lori Fielder con la Unión de Créditos de Empleados de Vermont, Wendy Ross, quien es propietaria de la casa. Y voy a presentar a May Booty en un minuto desde 350.org. Espero que hayan tenido la oportunidad de recorrer el gimnasio aquí y de reunirse con todos los exhibidores. Y estamos orgullosos y contentos de que estén con nosotros y de todo el trabajo importante que están haciendo. También tenemos una exhibición de afuera donde pueden ver vehículos eléctricos, una trailer de reparación de la casa entera. Es una gran cuestión. Muchos personas de bajo ingreso están gastando mucho dinero innecesariamente. Una casa de módulo de cero encajado construida en Vermont, una demo de un arco de fuego de madera y un tractor solar y más. Así que vale la pena caminar a la parada. En unos pocos minutos, escucharemos a May Booty, quien es la directora ejecutiva de 350.org. Y creo que todos ustedes saben que 350.org no es solo una de las grandes organizaciones ambientales de Estados Unidos, sino que es una organización internacional. Y fue fundada hace varios años por Bill McKibben, quien vive en Ripton, y May cuando eras estudiante en el Middlebury College. Así que 350.org tiene algunos herederos muy locales aquí en Vermont. También vamos a escuchar este tarde de un panel de expertos locales. Y luego vamos a tomar sus preguntas. Y luego la feria de recursos y talleres se reanudarán. Pero primero, déjeme decir algunas palabras sobre por qué mi oficina organizó este evento y agradezco a Haley, entre otros, mucho por organizarlo. La buena noticia es que en Vermont, como en muchas otras áreas de la vida social, nuestro estado está por delante de la curva cuando se trata de eficiencia energética y energía renovable. Es algo en lo que deberíamos tener orgullo, pero también es algo que debemos entender y requiere que hagamos mucho más allá de lo que estamos ahora. Estamos bien, pero podemos y debemos hacerlo mucho mejor. Muy a menudo, escucho a Vermonters que están interesados en tratar de reducir su consumo eléctrico, pero no saben dónde empezar. Hay muchas opciones, como pueden ver hoy, fuera de allí. Y a veces es difícil saber qué tecnología en particular, qué opción tiene sentido para ti, tu familia, tu casa, tu negocio. Bueno, los exhibibles y talleres de hoy están diseñados para darles información práctica sobre temas como paneles solares, financiación, bombas de calor, calor de madera limpia, energía geotérmica, viento a nivel residencial, almacenamiento de baterías avanzadas y mucho más. Hay un mundo que ahora está en una transición rápida y es difícil mantenerse al día con eso. Pero tenemos muchos excelentes exhibidores aquí que están en la frente de esa transición y deberíamos aprender de ellos. Lo que algunas personas pueden no saber es... Y este puede ser el punto más importante que puedo hacer desde una perspectiva del consumidor, es que muchas de estas tecnologías se pagan por sí mismas en unos pocos años. Así que incluso si estás aquí y realmente no te importa el medio ambiente, aunque duro que hay muchas personas aquí que sostienen esa visión, tal vez si fueras Donald Trump y pensaras que el cambio climático es un engaño, deberías también estar atento porque puedes ahorrar dinero. Y vas a estar ahorrando dinero más en el futuro. Y una de las preocupaciones que tengo, y espero que hablemos de esto en un momento, es que mucha gente no sabe eso. La gente dice, "Bueno, el solar está bien, es una gran idea, pero no puedo pagarla". Bueno, ¿sabes qué? En muchos casos, puedes pagar tu préstamo para ir al solar y no un centavo más que estés gastando en tu factura de energía, tu factura eléctrica ahora mismo. Y luego durante diez o doce años tienes electricidad gratuita. Esta es la palabra que tenemos que sacar, que la gente no puede pagar. Tenemos que hacer un trabajo mejor como estado y ciertamente como nación, es ayudar a la gente a financiar la transición al solar, a otros tipos de tecnologías, a la meteorización, porque es una buena inversión. Ahorrar dinero haciendo eso y no solo reducir las emisiones de carbono y proteger el medio ambiente. Déjame darles solo algunos ejemplos que creo que todos están familiarizados. Todos ustedes saben. Y hay gente aquí, y vamos a hablar de ello hoy. Gente que instala el solar ocho años después. Se han pagado su préstamo y tienen electricidad gratuita. Una familia en la valle superior hizo unos siete mil dólares de trabajo en eficiencia que se pagaba por sí mismo en términos de reducción de consumo de energía después de solo cinco años. Eso es una buena inversión y es algo que tenemos que publicar. Esto no es solo pro medio ambiente, es pro consumidor. Y las bombas de calor, por ejemplo, pueden ahorrar algunas familias tanto como un mil dólares al año o más en comparación con el aceite de refrigeración de la casa. Con un costo promedio instalado de cuatro a siete mil dólares, el periodo de devuelto de esa bomba de calor es de siete años o menos. Eso es una buena inversión. Así que ya sea motivado por luchar contra el cambio climático, como todos nosotros somos, o simplemente quiere ahorrar dinero en sus cuentas de energía, estos tipos de inversiones tienen buen sentido. Pero déjame decirles también sobre la otra razón por la que deberíamos invertir en eficiencia energética y energía sostenible, y eso es en términos de cambio climático, como todos ustedes saben. Estamos tratando de la gran crisis ambiental que enfrenta no solo Vermont, no solo América, sino el mundo entero. Y sé que todos ustedes están de acuerdo conmigo de que tenemos una responsabilidad moral de dejar este planeta, y hablo como un abuelo de siete. Tenemos una responsabilidad moral de dejar este planeta saludable y habitable para las generaciones futuras. Y todos ustedes saben, toda la mayoría de la gente estadounidense sabe. No dejes que la televisión Fox o nadie más les diga que este país está sobreviviendo a la cuestión del cambio climático. No es así. La mayor parte de la gente estadounidense sabe que el cambio climático es real, que ya está causando problemas devastadores en nuestro país y en todo el mundo en términos de ondas de calor, en términos de sequías prolongadas, más tormentas extremas, capas de hielo envenenando y mucho más. Ahora, sé que en algunos círculos, no mencionaré dónde, es fashionable adhucir la ciencia. Pero la verdad es que la comunidad científica casi universitaria nos dice que el cambio climático es real y que es causado por la actividad humana. Durante cientos de años, hemos quemado combustibles fósiles para calentar nuestros edificios, generar electricidad y alimentar nuestros vehículos. Y en el proceso, hemos liberado enormes cantidades de carbono de tráfico de calor. Hoy, el carbono atmosférico ahora está en su nivel máximo en los últimos 800.000 años. No es sorprendente que la temperatura del aire y del océano promedia ha estado subiendo constantemente durante décadas. Y 16 de los 17 años más calientes en registro han ocurrido desde 2001. Sí, señor Trump, el cambio climático es real. Como comienzan las temporadas de huracanes de este año, tomemos un momento para recordar lo que pasó justo el verano pasado. El huracán Harvey fue el más poderoso tormento para golpear Texas en 50 años. Irma fue el más fuerte huracán atlántico jamás. María fue el peor tormento para golpear Puerto Rico desde 1932. Y tengo la ocasión de visitar Puerto Rico. El daño allí fue increíble. Y la gente todavía hoy, si ustedes saben, no han recuperado de ese huracán. El calentamiento global puede no haber causado estas tormentas, pero la atmósfera más caliente y los océanos casi ciertamente las hicieron peores y más extremas. Las aguas más calientes alimentan estas tormentas, el aire más caliente sostiene más vapor, llevando a un rincón pesado y las océanos aumentan causando más surges de tormentas. Sería estúpido pensar que el cambio climático no afecta la gravedad y frecuencia de estas tormentas, sequías y ondas de calor, y sería aún más estúpido olvidar el momento de oportunidad que tenemos para abordar esta crisis. El panel intergubernamental de la ONU sobre el cambio climático, la IPCC, dice que si tenemos ninguna esperanza de evitar las peores consecuencias del cambio climático, incluyendo fallos de cosecha general, aumento de la hambre, migraciones de masa, enfermedades, destrucciones del ecosistema y extinción de especies, tenemos que dramáticamente reducir las emisiones de carbono y tenemos que hacerlo ahora. Desafortunadamente, tragicamente, tenemos un presidente y una dirección EPA que confía en la absurda noticia de que el cambio climático es un engaño. Y cuán peligroso y trágico eso es. Nuestro país tiene el potencial, tiene la energía cerebral, tiene la energía para liderar al mundo en transformar nuestro sistema energético. Y sin embargo, tenemos un presidente que no solo niega la realidad del cambio climático, sino que está en contacto con la industria de combustibles fósiles, llevándonos en exactamente la misma dirección. Como todos ustedes saben, Trump ha llenado su gabinete con denias climáticas. Ha retirado a los Estados Unidos de la Corte de Clima de París. Ha retrocedido la placa limpia de la presidencia de Obama y ha abierto fragilos aguas costeras y preciosas de las plantas para la extracción de gas y aceite nuevos. Y por cierto, el precio del gas está aumentando todavía. Y incluso quiere reducir los estándares de viaje para los nuevos automóviles y trucks. Así que en cada caso, tenemos que admirar la consistencia del presidente. Está equivocado en cada caso. Bueno, esa es la mala noticia. Y desearía minimizarla, pero no puedo. Es muy, muy mala noticia. Pero también quiero darles algunas buenas noticias. Y eso es, a pesar de que Trump busca acercar a sus amigos billonarios en las industrias de carbón, aceite y gas, hay una revolución que está sucediendo en comunidades en todo nuestro país cuando se trata de energía renovable y eficiencia energética. El año pasado, quería que escucharan esto, la energía renovable agregó 20 veces más electricidad a nuestro mix de energía que todos los combustibles fósiles combinados. Trump no lo sabe. Los renovables ahora cuentan por casi el 20% de la producción de electricidad doméstica y ese número, ese porcentaje, continúa creciendo. Aquí en Vermont, tenemos casi 225 megawatts de solar instalados o permitidos, más del tercio de la capacidad de la Yanki Nuclear High Power Plant de Vermont. Alguno de eso es solar a nivel de utilidad, otro es solar a nivel de comunidad y otro es solar distribuido en casas de madera, como la que tengo en Burlington. Y estamos haciendo grandes avances en almacenamiento de energía innovadora también. Y esto es revolucionario. La GMP, el proyecto Stafford Hill y Rutland está equipado con una red de baterías avanzada de 4 megawatt diseñada aquí en Vermont. En 2016, en un día verano muy caliente, ese sistema ahorró a los clientes doscientos mil dólares en sólo una hora usando energía almacenada en lugar de comprar en el mercado, con alta demanda. Y nuevamente, el almacenamiento de baterías avanzado tiene tanto uso a nivel de utilidad como en aplicaciones residenciales. Y nadie duda de que vamos a ver más y más utilización de baterías y que el precio del almacenamiento de baterías va bajando, bajando y bajando. Ahora, estas innovaciones están ocurriendo en todo el mundo. En Chile, por ejemplo, los sistemas solares avanzados ahora están entregando la electricidad más barata que es sin ningún subsidio, nunca, en ningún lugar, por ninguna tecnología. En otras palabras, ese es el futuro. Si quieres electricidad barata, vas a estar mirando al solar. Y esos precios han bajado y continuarán bajando. La industria de renovables también está creando trabajos bien pagados. Más de 350.000 en Estados Unidos solo. El sector solar de Estados Unidos ya emplea un cuarto de un millón de personas, más que Apple, Google y Facebook combinados. Y el potencial de crecimiento de trabajo adicional es increíble. Impresivamente, Vermont está en primer lugar en la nación por trabajos de solar por cápita. Lo que estamos mirando es una situación de ganar, ganar, ganar. Ahorramos dinero a la gente en sus cuentas de combustible. Eso es algo bueno. Luchamos contra el cambio climático y reducimos nuestras emisiones de carbono de dióxido. Eso es obviamente enormemente importante. Y desde una perspectiva económica, estamos creando trabajos bien pagados. Así que ¿dónde vamos desde aquí? En Washington, no estamos solo luchando contra el ataque de Trump al medio ambiente. Y tengo que decirles que es muy triste, quiero decir, dentro de la historia de Estados Unidos, que tenemos un administrador en la EPA que no cree en la protección ambiental. No importa lo que pueda decirles sobre la situación de Scott Pruitt, es en realidad peor. Así que esa es la realidad con la que estamos tratando. Pero sin embargo, yo y otros progresistas en el Congreso estamos introduciendo y apoyando legislación para promover eficiencia energética y energía renovable. Y no quiero ir a todos los detalles de los presupuestos que he presentado. Pero suficiente para decir que una de mis prioridades principales es luchar por la legislación para terminar los subsidios de combustibles fósiles. Tenemos que promover la eficiencia. Tenemos que avanzar hacia el 100% de los renovables. Tenemos que invertir en nuestros nuevos sistemas de ferrocarriles y en el transporte público. Tenemos que modernizar nuestro puente para soportar una revolución de energía limpia. Y el punto que quiero hacer, y sé que el panel lo hará también, es que la tecnología está mejorando cada día. El conocimiento está expandiéndose. El problema que enfrentamos no es que no sabemos qué hacer o cómo hacerlo. Lo que nos falta ahora es la voluntad política de tomar una extraordinariamente poderosa industria de combustibles fósiles que están mucho más preocupadas por sus beneficios a corto plazo que el futuro de este planeta. Y nuestro trabajo es decirles, "Disculpen, sus días son duros. Sus beneficios a corto plazo no son de los que hablamos". Y el otro punto que quiero reiterar nuevamente es que quiero que todos en Vermont y en este país sean capaces de aprovechar esta revolución. La energía solar no debe solo ser para los ricos y el medio ambiente. Y tenemos que encontrar formas... Y tenemos que encontrar formas de decirle a la gente, cuando la clase de trabajo de bajo ingreso está en este estado, que hay mecanismos de financiación que tienen sentido para ustedes y que pueden pagar. Y si no tenemos esos mecanismos hoy, tenemos que tenerlos mañana. Pero no hay razón por la cual, solo porque no tienes mucho dinero, deberías estar desperdiciando una cantidad increíble de tu ingreso limitado. Tenemos que cambiar eso, asegurar que el solar y las energías sostenibles y la meteorización estén disponibles para todos. La línea de fondo es esto. Nuestro trabajo, como digo muy a menudo, es pensar en grande y no en pequeño. Si estamos serios en la trata de la crisis del cambio climático global, va a llevar no solo millones de personas en nuestro país, sino billones de personas en todo el mundo que se unen para exigir políticas para transformar nuestro sistema energético. Va a llevar a la gente organizándose a nivel de base y tomar acción en sus comunidades. Y va a llevar a la gente adoptando estas tecnologías a sí mismas. Porque al final del día, todos ustedes que instalan estas nuevas tecnologías se vuelven los mejores vendedores que hay. Porque si vas a un vecino y dices, "Mira, funciona para mí. Corté mi factura eléctrica un 90%. Voy a pagar esto en diez años. Tengo electricidad gratuita". ¡Guau! ¿Es real? Bien, lo haré también. Así que todos se convierten en vendedores para esta revolución de energía. Así que, habiendo dicho todo eso, vamos a entrar en algunos detalles. Es un gran placer para mí recibir de regreso a Vermont a Mary Booty, una de las fundadoras de 350.org. May, muchas gracias por todo el gran trabajo que has hecho.
Hola a todos. ¿Cómo están?
Bien.
Bueno, como dijo Bernie, es un gran placer para mí estar de regreso en Vermont. Y estoy muy emocionada por este evento en particular porque realmente puedes acomodar las soluciones aquí. Así que muy a menudo hablamos de cambio climático y la primera pregunta es, "¿Qué hago por ello?" Y lo están haciendo ahora mismo, así que estoy increíblemente feliz de estar contigo. Y fue hace 11 años hoy, no, aproximadamente 11 años atrás, cuando estaba descargando mi habitación en Middlebury con todos mis bienes y seis de mis amigos. Estábamos cargando la U-Haul con una mesa colgando y suficientes sillas para sentarnos. Y íbamos a movernos a Burlington para configurar el oficio para la campaña de "Step It Up". Y no sabía qué iba a pasar. Estaba muy emocionada por tomar esta semana de fiesta con mis amigos. Hemos estado organizando en nuestro campus durante los últimos cuatro años. Y pensamos, "Vamos a tener que parar solo porque estamos dejando Middlebury. Podemos seguir adelante". Pero, ustedes saben, fue un gran salto. Y así tenía muchas palmeras en mi estómago, pero creía en estas personas y creía en el trabajo que íbamos a hacer. Así que nos fuimos a nuestra U-Haul. Y he estado trabajando en eso con ese grupo desde hace 11 años hasta ahora. Y habíamos obtenido esta idea de que podíamos seguir adelante porque hemos estado en Vermont. Y esto es, como todos ustedes saben mejor que yo, un lugar como no otro donde hay una comunidad que empiezas a darte cuenta que puedes construir una comunidad como esta dondequiera que estés. Y esa fue la experiencia que tuvimos como estudiantes. Bicamos desde Burlington a Montpelier con todas las otras universidades de Vermont en apoyo de la legislación de energía limpia en la Casa de Estado. Teníamos las ruedas pegadas a nuestros vehículos de bicicleta. Trabajamos con la gente de Waterbury. Algunos de ustedes pueden recordar la feria de tirelas IP y el plan de quemar tirelas de la Fábrica de Papas Internacional. Y trabajamos con esa campaña ciudadana. Y hostes teach-ins sobre la importancia de votar como activista de clima con nuestro invitado especial, Bernie Sanders. This was in 2006. Así que estábamos tan involucrados como estudiantes, pero fue mucho más que estar en el campus. Fue sobre la comunidad en Vermont. Así que solo muy genuinamente quiero agradecer a todos ustedes y a todos los Vermonters porque ha sido un viaje increíble para mí ser parte de este movimiento. Y es porque estaba aquí en Vermont hace 11 años. Y la campaña de "Step It Up" tenía un simple objetivo. Estábamos pidiendo que el Congreso pasara legislación agresiva y ambiciosa. Pero con pocas excepciones, tengo que decir, ha sido más sobre ponerlo en pie en el Congreso sobre este tema. Y eso no nos hizo rendir. Así que quiero hablarles hoy sobre lo que cambió en esos 11 años porque bastante mucho pasó. Y las tres cosas que quiero señalar son, primero, el cambio en lo que hemos visto sobre los impactos climáticos. Y Bernie habló de esto ya, pero quiero destacar algunos aspectos más sobre ello. La segunda es cuán choque ha sido todo el mundo sobre la revolución de la energía renovable. Y la tercera, y la parte que más sé de ella, es el hecho de que en realidad tenemos una poderosa movimentación climática ahora y que no lo hacíamos hace 11 años. En realidad podemos construir el poder político de la forma en que no lo hacíamos antes. Así que mucho ha pasado. En la primera parte, ustedes conocen esta historia muy bien sobre los eventos extremos del clima. Lo que quiero hablar sobre es cómo el cambio climático hace que existentes en la pobreza peor. Ya sabemos que estamos viviendo en un tiempo histórico de desigualdad en este país y en todo el mundo. Pero el cambio climático afecta a las personas que ya son las más vulnerables. Así que si ya estás luchando por pagar el alquiler y luego tu comunidad está despejada de un inundación, vas a estar luchando más. Y así, el tejido social está volviendo a ser más estrecho debido a estos impactos climáticos. No es solo el hecho de que está cambiando los lugares que amamos por generaciones. Está cambiando la forma en que podemos vivir juntos como comunidad, y eso es realmente serio. La otra cosa que quiero destacar es que ya hemos calentado al planeta un grado, ¿verdad? Un grado Celsius. Y todos los impactos de los que hemos estado hablando pasaron con un grado de calentamiento. Pero los científicos están prediciendo cinco, seis, siete grados de posibilidad de calentamiento si no nos deshacemos del curso en el que estamos. Y así, a la mayor escala, estamos en una carrera contra el tiempo. Y lo era hace 11 años. Y lo que quiero decir sobre eso es que cuando firmé como estudiante de una universidad y ustedes no se firmaron, pero tomé un compromiso de ser parte de este movimiento, parte de la razón por la que es, yo soy una persona. Yo viví aquí hace 11 años. Y esto fue una cuestión que afectó a mi generación. Y es por eso que ven mucha gente joven uniendo al movimiento climático porque podemos entender cómo estamos afectados personalmente. Pero realmente pensé que esto me afectaría mucho más tarde en mi vida. No esperaba que en este momento en el tiempo fuera tan serio. Y no esperaba, ciertamente, que mi ciudadano de San Antonio, California, se hubiera quemado casi por un incendio hace seis meses. Pero eso es exactamente lo que pasó. Tres incendios diferentes llegaron a cien pies de la casa de mi padre en Sonoma. Y así pensé, "Tal vez esto no sucedería cuando sea mucho más mayor", pero ahora sucede. Así que empiezo allí porque es muy serio. Y así, el trabajo que estamos haciendo hoy es importante y serio y tiene muy real impactos. Así que siempre empezamos allí. Es por eso que nos llamamos 350.org, porque nos enfocamos en lo que sabemos sobre la ciencia. Pero también sabemos algo que no creo que fuera muy claro hace 11 años, que es que la solución es en realidad bastante simple. No pensé eso entonces. Pensé que la solución al cambio climático era increíblemente compleja, pero en realidad se trata de cambiar nuestro sistema energético de los combustibles fósiles a un 100% de energía renovable. Hay mucho más que tenemos que hacer, pero a nivel fundamental tenemos que hacer eso y sabemos cómo hacerlo. Como dijo Bernie, es realmente ahora un obstáculo político. Ese es un obstáculo que podemos corregir. La economía, la tecnología, lo tenemos que resolver. Así que eso me lleva al segundo punto, que es, en los 11 años desde que empezamos, ha sido choque cuán fácil y rápido se ha ido a cambiar a energía renovable. Cuando solíamos poner signs sobre energía limpia ahora, realmente fue un poco de un sueño. No sé si alguno de ustedes lo recuerdan, pero a veces me preocupaba en protestas porque la gente decía, "Pero ¿puedo realmente ir al solar?" Y yo decía, "Creo que sí". Ahora, no hay un reflejo de eso. Y algunos de los lugares en todo el mundo donde estamos viendo los mayores cambios son algunas de las partes más pobres del mundo, donde la gente no tiene acceso a la electricidad en absoluto. Y saltan por el carbón, saltan por el aceite y van directo al solar. Y esto no es en lugares como Uganda, India y muchas partes de Asia del Sur. Si quieren ver algunas de las líneas frontales de la revolución de energía limpia, está sucediendo en el mundo en desarrollo. Está sucediendo como traer a la gente electricidad por primera vez, desde la ciencia. Así que es increíblemente emocionante. Y algunos activistas climáticos que sé que deberíamos realmente hablar de eso y no realmente hablar de esa parte muy aterradora, pero ustedes saben que no es como yo me siento. Creo que tenemos que hablar de ambos. Pero ha sido increíblemente poderoso. Y la última cosa que quiero decir sobre esto es que es literalmente... And the last thing I want to say about this is it is literally empowering. One other issue you work on where you talk about building power and the way you build it is actually changing how you use power in your home. It's an incredibly tangible way of combating climate change. And I know about you all, a lot of the stuff I see on the news, I get very depressed. And all I can think about is writing a check or volunteering, which is incredibly important, don't get me wrong. But with climate, you need to do those things, but you can also enact it in your community right away. So we have that tool, we've got to use it. The last thing that's changed a lot is the movement. And this is the part that means the most to me because I've gotten to see it with my own eyes. And when we started Step It Up and then 350, it was in large part because you couldn't really visualize the climate change movement. We knew that there were all these people who really carry that climate change because we knew them and we were in communication with them. But it didn't feel like a social movement. People were not in the streets. We were not exercising political power. That has really changed in eleven years. And that is not that much time when you think about the history of social movements. People fought for the right to vote for hundreds of years. And in a relatively short time, this movement has really been able to force presidents to make decisions they didn't want to do. Just last week in Canada, a major pipeline is being proposed. And the company, based on activist pressure, decided not to build it. So the government bought the pipeline, which is not a good thing. But what is important to remember is that it was the activist pressure. And they're going to get the government to have to sell the pipeline. That's my prediction. But in place after place, we've seen three hundred and fifty cities in Brazil pass bans on tracking. We've seen in the past month twenty-six clean energy actions in the Ukraine where there's almost no climate movement, but it's starting to be built. So we see these stories everywhere. And here in Vermont, the great people at 350 Vermont just told me there were thirty-five resolutions passed at town meeting on climate solutions. So it really is everywhere. And there's a bit of a formula developing at the community level where you can stop a fossil fuel project if it's in your community. You can go to a hundred percent renewable energy. You can stop the financing of a project through divesting or investing in the solutions. We know these things work. They work practically everywhere. And we just need more people doing it. And that's what we're starting to see. So I just want to end by saying, to me, the story about being in Vermont was all about finding a community of activists to work together with and to build something we didn't think we could build. And we surprised ourselves, right? In a number of different ways. Not all of them good, but most of them really good. And so what you're doing today is not only something for your own family and your own community, but something that has a much wider impact because all of these actions added up really do add up to how we shift our whole economy and such a range of these devastating impacts of climate change. So we really can do it, and I'm grateful to be part of your community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary, for your remarks and all that you are doing. Let's come here from Olivia Campbell Anderson, who is with Renewable Energy Vermont. Look in.
So, thank you. My name's Olivia. Renewable Energy Vermont focuses me out of print. But our members are businesses, nonprofits, individuals, bringing you clean energy solutions, whether that's solar for your home or advanced with heating, cold climate heat pumps or lighter vehicles. We are committed to achieving Vermont's ninety percent total renewable energy as soon as possible. And I am excited and inspired to see so many people here today to share their clean energy and climate solutions and to learn how to save money by using renewable electricity, heating and transportation. You might be surprised to learn that solar and wind currently only make up twelve percent of Vermont's electricity generation. And I'm just wondering by a little show of hands, how many people here have solar power in their house? Dan. Wow, that's pretty awesome. And you know why that's possible? The science and technology and solutions, partially because of the work of Senator Sanders in getting the federal tax credit to help pay for those systems, partially because of the work of your local senators and representatives, like Senator Mark McDonald here, who helped establish net metering. That wouldn't be possible in your house if we didn't have a net metering and allies in the legislature. We have a lot to do, twelve percent. We have a lot to do to grow our energy independence, as you know. And seventy-eight percent, with seventy-eight cents of every dollar that's spent on fossil fuels leaves Vermont's economy. Just like we buy local food because it's good for our health, it's good for farmers, it's good for our local economy, it's good for our community, so is local renewable energy. And what we know is by many of the exhibitors here today, the electric vehicles that you see outside, we have the technology. We have the solutions available. And if you are looking for more about those solutions, talk with many of the folks here. I know you will. Most of those are RES members, Renewable Energy Vermont members. But you can also go to our website, which is REVermont.org. And we have a business listing. We've sort of vetted to make sure folks have insurance, tell you information about how many customers in Vermont that they've helped, how much they've installed. But if you're looking for solar, if you're looking for heating solution, advanced with heating, you're looking for solar hot water or energy storage for your batteries, you can go on our website and see all the companies in Vermont that you have that can help you install that in your home. And so we're going to keep going here and looking forward to taking questions from you. And I just am so inspired by everyone that's here and that, I think by a show of hands, it looks like, what do you think? Maybe forty percent? So all of those folks can talk to the folks who didn't raise their hands. And we've got a lot of work to do, and we've got to do it urgently. So thank you, and we'll talk more with your questions.
Thank you, Olivia. Lee Ling Young is with Efficiency Vermont.
Hi, everybody. It's great to see you on this beautiful day. We all rather be outside in the sun playing and soaking up our own personal solar energy. But I'm glad to see you all here today. And I want to thank Senator Sanders on us for bringing together this really great event. So Efficiency Vermont is your energy resource. And I really want to emphasize that you're part of it. It's anybody that uses electricity in Vermont contributes to the Efficiency Vermont service. And it's accessible to you as a homeowner. It's accessible to you as a business owner. It's accessible to you as a town planner. So Efficiency Vermont does the work to assess efficiency opportunities, whether that's saving fuel, electricity, new technologies, making changes. We assess the efficiency opportunities and then we bring the best forward. Oftentimes, we provide an incentive to help people overcome the initial cost of making a change. But we only do that for changes that we know will really have a benefit for you as the electricity payer, but also for all of us as members in the broader community of folks that consume electricity and are part of the Vermont economy. So some examples of what we do, efficient light bulbs have become standard. And that's because of the work that Efficiency Vermont has done to make sure they're in every store and that they're affordable. And over time, they have become more affordable. And we've been able to back out. But the reason they became more affordable is because we all did a great job swapping out the light bulbs in our home. And the increased consumption of those products helped the manufacturers bring the cost down. Heat pumps. Many folks here came to my heat pump session this morning and told me that they already have heat pumps in their home. Heat pump technology was not ready for this climate until just a few years ago. So at that point that it became suitable for this climate, we evaluated all the heat pumps that are available and said, "Well, these are really the ones that are good to use in Vermont." And we put an incentive on those. We also work with small businesses. We just launched an initiative to offer an energy walkthrough to any small business in Vermont. So if you're a small business owner and you've gotten your postcard from us, please give us a call and schedule your walkthrough. We'd like to look at all your processes and help you figure out where the energy is being used and how you can save. We train contractors that go into homes so that they are looking for the best opportunities to make a healthy home, a safe home, a comfortable home and an efficient home. So we're providing services to everybody in Vermont. We want you all to take advantage. And I have another session this afternoon. If you want to come and talk to me about transforming our home energy situation.
Thank you, Olivia. Lori Feerbrook is going to be touching on an issue which is of enormous consequence because it deals with financing. At the end of the day, when we talk about the energy revolution, we've got to pay a whole lot of attention to financing. So Lori, thanks for what you're doing. Lori is with the Vermont State Employees Credit Union. Lori, thanks.
Thank you, Senator. And thank you to Haley and everybody at the Senator's Office for awaiting us today. It really is great and inspiring to see so many people come out on such a beautiful day in Vermont. So the upfront costs of the energy efficiency projects, heating system upgrades, solar installations can be a challenge for most Vermonters. An average home efficiency project can range, you know, in the average about eight thousand dollars. An average solar project can be about twenty-five thousand dollars. This sounds like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money. You know, we all can relate to how long it takes to earn this amount of money and how we all carefully allocate our earnings to pay for all of our expenses, including our energy bills, which honestly can also be a lot of money. So what we like to think about instead of like how much this all is, instead, we like to think about maybe making an investment, an upfront investment, which is really what some of these solutions are about. So that includes energy efficiency, renewables, solar, heat pumps. You know, it actually makes sense to finance many of these purchases. The monthly loan payments, and you can talk to us about how that might look for your individual situation, can actually be offset by the savings of these purchases or by the power generation of a solar array. At VSCCU, which is Vermont State Employees Credit Union, anyone who visits or works in the state can become a member. We also have an extended membership opportunity for members of MESSI, Northeast Sustainable Energy Association. We guide the investments that our members make. We make them in our own business. We benefit from solar as well. And whether the purchase is solar or weatherization, a heating system, heat pumps, green vehicles or even bicycles, we make these loans affordable and accessible so that most people can take advantage of them. Specialized loan program, B-Green, is, you know, we've been doing this for a long time. And we used to hear all the time, you know, "This is all great, but there's no money for this. There's no financing available." You know, well, we have money available and we have financing options available that are really customized and specialized to these purchases. You know, you can talk to many of the people here in Vermont exhibiting today. We collaborate with the vendors. We partner with them. We listen to them. What is needed in the marketplace? You know, why do people need to make these improvements? The loans that we offer have features such as discounted interest rates, extended terms, a super easy application process and a fast turnaround. So we streamline the process to make it easier for borrowers. We partner with folks here. We collaborate with Efficiency Vermont. We're members of RED, which we're very proud of. So, you know, again, VSCCU is a nonprofit. We're a financial cooperative, which means we're member-owned. So if you're a member of VSCCU, you have a piece of that business. We offer a special investment opportunity, a B-Green money market account. You can get one as a person, you know, as a resident or as a business. And the money that you deposit is always accessible to you. It's not locked up in a CD. And a hundred percent of the deposits go to fund the future loan growth of the B-Green program. So we hope that you talk to us about maybe taking advantage of that as well. So we just want to, you know, say we're so happy that we could be here today and support this type of opportunity. Our mission is to provide affordable financing options. And, you know, really, you know, we feel inspired by the Senator that, you know, we can actually meet these goals that we have personally and also our state commitment to reach our energy commitments. Thanks.
Thank you, Lori. At the end of the day, what I think people want to know is how all of the energy revolution impacts their very lives. And so our last panelist is Wendy Ross, who is a member of the largest organization up here. She's a homeowner in the state of Vermont, right?
Good afternoon. My name's Wendy. I live right here in Randolph Center, just actually down the road near the side of the college. And I was invited to come and tell you what I've done in my house, which has sort of been five different stages. The first thing that happened was I was given a free energy audit from Efficiency Vermont. Somebody had one date and said, "I don't want this. You want it." So I said, "Sure." So they came to my house and they did a door test and they looked at the whole house to see what upgrades I needed to be more energy efficient. And that was really helpful. And at that time, they put in some insulation in my basement and the seals around there, which was all I could afford at the time. But then Randolph Energy Committee, which many of you know all about, started having programs to educate people about the different things that they could do in their house. And so I went down and learned about zero energy now and how if you did things straight away, you got a really good return. And so I looked at putting in solar panels. Well, probably like many of you, my house doesn't face the right way for solar panels. And I didn't want a big solar array in my yard. Fortunately for me, Randolph Community Solar, just down the road, was selling shares. And so I bought shares in Randolph Community Solar. And that offset my electricity use by a whole lot. But then I decided I was still using oil and I really wasn't happy about that. So I looked into getting some heat pumps. This wasn't straight away. I mean, I did it sort of over the years. And I found that my house wasn't especially conducive to heat pumps because it's not a nice square or rectangular building. So that cost me a little more than I expected. But I had to buy a couple of extra solar shares to cover it. But I'm very happy with my heat pumps because now I get heat and everything with hardly any. My oil bill has gone down significantly. I got a call from them last year saying, "What has happened? We're not selling your variable oil." Well, let me tell you about my heat pumps. Which I'm very happy about. And then the last part of the thing that I knew I needed was some insulation in the attic because I knew that lots of the heat was going out and there was not enough depth of insulation. So that was the last thing that I did is had somebody come, connect it with zero energy now and put insulation in my attic. So those are the five stages of the things I have done. So those are the five stages of the things I have done. And I'm not really into figures, but as I said, I'm paying hardly any money to Irving Energy and hardly any money to Vermont Power. And they tell me that my air leakage is reduced by 50% and that return on my investment for energy savings will be 4% overall and return on investment for solar will be 7.4% overall. And do other figures, they don't make a whole lot of sense to me. I'm not really a figures person. Happy to, I'm really glad I did it. I was fortunate enough at the beginning to get an investment that I'd made sort of returned to me. So that was my motivation. I said, "I know how I'm going to use this money." So I'm really glad I did it. And as you have heard, there are ways that you can do it too and go through the different stages so that you can be part of fighting the energy overwhelming. Thank you.
I'll look. Can I open up for questions? But let me start off with the first question. Any of the panelists can jump in. I think Wendy did a good job talking about the agencies, the organizations that were able to help her in the transition she made in her home. But I'm wondering, how many Vermonters, despite the good work of all of your organizations, actually know what is available to them and know what the bottom line is? So my assumption, especially in this state, vast majority of the people want to do the right thing environmentally, but many people actually can't afford to do that. Now, if we had sane federal policies, obviously that would change. We would do things like on-bill financing, which would make every American be able to borrow money at a rate that would not be higher than the fuel bills that they're paying. So that for seven or eight years, you pay what you would pay to the electric company or maybe to the oil company, and then you see a significant reduction or perhaps free energy from there on in. That makes such eminent sense. But let me just throw it to the panelists here in Vermont, or perhaps actually, maybe wants to jump in. We're talking about a revolution. We're talking about something that is cost-effective. If there was not a crisis in climate change, yes? This would make eminent sense from personal economics. How well are we doing, guys, in getting the word out to the people of Vermont? Who wants to... Lee, did you want to jump in on that one? Hold close to you, ma'am.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So I was really lucky to work with VCRD. John Copans is here from VCRD on visiting two communities that have invited VCRD and to help them figure out how to prepare their community for the coming climate future. And one thing that was surprising to me is that across the board, the top thing everybody asks for is information. So I conclude from that that people know, but they want to know more. And I also feel proud that Efficiency Vermont, one of our main services is to help people get the information that they want and to get quality information and to help them sort through really the best choices. So more, more information is more necessary.
Laurie, why don't you jump in? You guys are major finances in the state for renewables.
Yeah, I would also add to that and say that I think that priority or prioritization is also a factor. You know, quite honestly, folks will have no problem going out and dropping $30,000 on a new car, and then they'll come to us and say, "Well, I don't have money to do an energy renovation." That costs $30,000. What am I going to do about that? So I think in a way, it's, you know, there's just some information that can be better information about that return on investment that even with the debt service, an energy renovation, or a solar project, or heat pump project, still makes financial sense, and it's a great investment. It's not just a good investment. The other piece is that it's not always monetary. It's not always about there being a financial return. Lots of people end up coming to the credit union. If they hadn't come to us through a vendor or a program of some kind, we get the call saying, "We need to redo our roof, so we need a loan for that." Well, you know, it's, they come because there's a problem. So we really work hard to educate the folks that work at VSCCU to say, "When you hear that, that they need a roof, offer that if they instantly, if they add an insulation project, which might only be a couple thousand dollars more or less, you know, might not be all that much more, they'll qualify for a low-interest loan, and the difference will pay for itself." So I think it is about, you know, I agree with Lillian. It's information, it's understanding priorities, and it's recognizing the value of this kind of investment.
Other comments on that?
Well, we have found that a lot of people don't... People know about solar. You know, you drive around Vermont, you see it a lot, and we're really thankful for that. A lot of people do not know about renewable heating, advanced heating or coal-climate heat pumps. A lot of people really don't know about advanced heating. A lot of people also don't think that electric vehicles are for them or they don't know that actually you can get electric vehicles now that go almost 300 miles for a charge. Or how do they really work? Am I going to run out? Am I going to be able to charge? You know, drive electric cars outside? I mean, I think those are two areas where people don't really know how it works, don't know that it will work for them, and because those are newer solutions.
Maybe you want to?
I would just say that I think it does have to happen at the state level because the laws are different depending on what state you're in. So this would be a different set of answers if we were in Oregon or Wisconsin. But I think that, I think the information issue is the key. We have a lot of groups saying, "You need to go in this direction." Like us, and a lot of groups providing the solutions. But it would be nice if there was one place you could go that could kind of direct you to all the things you're interested in. That would be a nice role for the government, frankly.
Let me just ask a question. I want to maybe get comments on this issue, and then we'll go on to anything else. Correct me where I'm wrong, please correct me if I'm wrong. But I assume depending on the size of the home and energy use and all that stuff, solar location, that an average person with the federal tax breaks that exist right now can install solar for, you tell me what, $10,000, $12,000, $14,000? And pay that loan back. You can pay for 10 years or whatever it is at the same rate you're now paying your electric bill. Yeah? So there's no difference from paying an electric bill to GMP or I'm paying off my debt to GMP or some other, or the credit union. I'm not going to be in a pennyworth shape, and then for 10, 12 years, I have free electricity. Why wouldn't anybody not take advantage of that? Wendy, what did you want to say?
I just wanted to say that my solar shares cost a total of $15,600, but I got a federal tax credit of $3,120, which meant the total cost of solar was $12,400. And I have like two outside units and three inside units, which a lot of people don't need that much. So a lot of people, it would cost less. And they are projecting that my annual dollar savings are $924 a year.
So in about 11 years, you're going to be paid off and then you have free energy?
Right.
So who, you know, what drives me a little bit nuts on this issue is why aren't we doing a better job telling people that we can see a 50% reduction in their fuel bills? And, you know, we're making progress. And maybe it's right. Clearly, the world is very different. And you drive around Vermont and there's a lot more solar than there used to be. But I'm not quite sure that ordinary working people understand that this is a way to save money. Costco has a sign that says 50% reduction on everything that we're selling in a long line at Costco, right? We should have a longer line at the credit union and other places that we have right now. All right, let me open it up for comments on that. Yeah, sir. Stand up, there's a...
Yeah, I'm David from, this is Richard, from Barry.
David, hold the mic. Close to you, ma'am.
And back in '73, some of us remember, there was an oil embargo, and all the restaurants had to stop serving ice water because ice water costs energy. But now I go into a restaurant once in a while, and I get a 32-ounce glass of ice water that I don't drink because at my age, you don't drink 32 ounces of ice water. So was it a government program that stopped these restaurants? I think it seems like a waste of energy.
Sometimes they are in California. They have to deal with whatever. Most of the time, it is... I want to get back to this question. I want help on this from the audience. Why is it that if people can save 50% over a 20-year period on their electric bill or on their energy bills, why isn't the more people not taking advantage of it? Our gentleman right about there. Yes, sir. Be loud, please.
Sure, yeah. I've been working on this at the community level for over 10 years now. And one of the big challenges at the home level is if people move every seven years. So it's great that your solar is going to be paid off in 11 years, but the average person isn't going to see that return, isn't going to see that drop. So getting the real estate industry to incorporate these systems into the value of their homes is absolutely critical. And I am extremely tired of hearing the real estate industry complain that they can't sell, it's harder for them to sell houses that way, when really what they're saying is, "We can't be upfront about what it costs to live in a house," which should be fraudulent.
Well, what you're saying is, look, if I am buying a house which has, which is weatherized and has solar, and I'm paying very little for my energy, but that would seem to be a positive in the sale of a house, yes?
Should be.
Are you saying the real estate industry is not incorporating that financially?
They are actively aborting it as too complicated.
Okay, well, there you go. That's an issue we want to...
And that's probably because they don't talk about how much it costs to operate a house that doesn't have all of this...
Yeah, no, that's the point, that there should be a way for a buyer to see the full cost of living in a house. You know, they put the mortgage up front. They put the taxes on there. They put any, what do they call them? You have aside, you know, assessments, tax assessments on there. All that stuff's laid out, but not the energy cost.
Good point.
Anything right on there.
Okay. A gentleman, yeah? Woman on the...
Hi, I'm Darla Breda. I think the sad truth is it's economic security. People don't know that they're still going to have their job 11 years from now and that they'll be able to stay in that house. And that is a real problem as far as people getting solar and whatnot.
It's kind of the same point that he made. But the truth is that if you invest in solar and purchaser of your house is going to pay significantly less for electricity, that should add to the value of your house. You should get that return on your investment. A gentleman right here. Yeah?
Thank you. My name's Tyler. I have solar at home. And getting to the point about people saving on their energy costs, we just had a 5% increase in our electric rate. Well, guess what? That's a 5% increase in my rate of return after taxes. So every time utility bills and fuel bills and gas prices go up, by investing in renewables and insulation and reducing your overhead, you're making a conservative hedge against energy cost inflation.
Small hedge fund manager.
But, you know, but to, rather than saying, to really emphasize the point that it's such a good investment and that energy bills are probably not on the positive side going to go down.
Okay, other questions or comments on anything?
Ask up. Your... Sorry. My name's Jazzy Peter. I'm the actual, I'm the Republican candidate.
I don't want any political speeches.
I don't want, I have a question. So the question is, President Obama noted that the largest source of fuel is nuclear power. I understand shutting down Vermont Yankee because it was leaking. But there are other places where that, where nuclear power does not be very carbon footprint as opposed to batteries, even advanced ones. So what?
That's not a bad question.
So my question is, why is that resource not being utilized?
And that's a bad question. I happen to be opposed to new nuclear power for a couple of reasons. Number one, I get very scared to see another power show like we saw in Fukushima, Japan. And I worry about the long-term safety. And number two, we don't know how to get rid of the damn nuclear waste that we have right now. Right now, I'm, right now, while we shut, while we shut... I don't know. I'm not going to get into the debate with you. You asked the question. I'm going to give my answer. While we shut down... Please give a back-up. While we shut down Vermont Yankee, we still have nuclear waste on the shores of the Connecticut River, something that many Vermonters are not aware of. Okay, I got your question.
I'm figuring to help reduce fossil fuels by the airline industry. Do you have any kind of plan for that?
Yes. Okay. Other questions? Yeah, stand. Yeah, right here.
Okay. We have nine...
Stand up. I've got a mic.
I'm Renee Mather. And we have nine people living in our house. I just started a solar place. And for me, the information, I couldn't find it. I'm learning since I started at my job. But solar seemed overwhelming. It seemed too big. So my question is, what do you do for, say, your middle class, not upper-middle class, paycheck to paycheck? You have to have electricity. We've got nine people. And you say, "Well, it's going to cost the same amount as your electric bill." Our electric bill is astronomical, $500 last month plus. And my boss came out and did an energy thing, and it's our hot water heater, blah, blah, blah. But my credit was stolen. So what happens when, "Oh, you should do this, and you should get solar, and you should do this and that"? It's not an option for us right now. It is not an option. But it would literally be life-changing. That's for me, lower-middle class. But also, what about the older aging community? That's, what is it? They only have a certain amount each month.
Excellent.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Okay. Good question. Who wants to take a shot at that, Laurie?
So first of all, thanks for that question, and I think that's really an important one. And really, the answer, because that's complex, right? There's a lot to it. There's a lot to unpack there. The answer is that it's, you know, it's going to be custom. So that's one thing we do at the credit union is that we work with our members to really look at your situation. We would definitely recommend in that situation that you start with Efficiency Vermont to figure out why that consumption is so high. And then from there, you know, you can work with them to come up with some solutions. And, you know, we have lots of people all the time that access the HeatSaver Loan, which is a state subsidized loan that Efficiency Vermont is offering, and we're a lender for it. And it does offer very discounted rates for lower-income households.
All right, Laurie, I think what you're saying is you should drop in and walk to somebody.
There's lots of options, and you should.
Okay, well, do that. All right, other questions or comments? Yeah, right there.
My name's Daniel from California. I've been a Vermonter for two years. I just got on loan with ESCU to put in solar heater, pardon me, what do you call them? Heat pumps. I want to put in solar panels. I'm going to have them on the road in Main Street in Putney where people can see them. I don't know the answer to your question, why people don't know more. I'm going to make sure they do know more because I firmly believe in the 350 Initiative of the town meeting resolution. I'm going to take that on as a project for my own town.
Do you have a sense of how your investment is working for you financially?
My investment started operating on Thursday. And I believe the heat pump is going to make around 9% with a nine-year payback. And I don't pay taxes, so I don't get the rebate on the photovoltaics. But I'll get, I'll get a payback in about 10 years instead of eight years. And I'll get about 15% return on the photovoltaics.
Sounds like a pretty good investment, huh? Okay. All right, there's a gentleman right there.
Say, you can take some walking. Thank you. Brand new kind of political football that we have to deal with here in Vermont is attracting industry and good jobs to the state. And we keep hearing that we have to be competitive. And we keep hearing that we have to be competitive with other states or industries go elsewhere. And I would propose, and it's a lot harder to be competitive in Vermont, because we have all this stuff that falls out of the sky, has to be rearranged all winter long so that we can get to work, move goods around. It's a lot harder to compete in that than it would be in the South, where you don't have that to deal with. And I'm just thinking that it would be a boon if we could get a lot more home-based forms of income, or home-based income, home-based business or industry. And that would also reduce the amount of commuter traffic we have, which would significantly diminish our carbon footprint. And it would also be a big help if we could get some decent internet into the car reaches of Vermont. So I guess what I'm asking for is a silver bullet. It would solve about five problems. I just missed it, and I don't know what we have to say about that. Thank you.
Well, I agree. I mean, one of the problems we have in Vermont and throughout rural America, throughout rural America, young people are leaving rural America, heading to the cities. But I think, if I understand your point, that with the explosion of technology, where more and more people are now able, if there was decent broadband and decent cellphone service, more and more people could do their work at home and enjoy, I think, raising their families in a rural community, if there were good schools, is, is the challenge that we face. So we have worked hard with some success, not enough, to expand broadband in the state of Vermont. I think anybody here from Springfield? Springfield has now, you know, one of the most sophisticated broadband systems in the country, very, very fast. But we have got to continue that effort. I agree with you absolutely. But also, I would point out, is that if we lower the cost of energy in the state of Vermont, that also becomes an attractive quality to bring businesses to the state. Okay. Yeah, right there, okay.
Hi, I'm Danielle DeMaresch from Dorset, Vermont. I work with grassroots solar, solar installers. And my question is about affordable housing. Because just as the gentleman up there said, that efficiency of a house, or the cost to run that house should be part of when you buy a house, it should also be, that information should also be available to renters, and it should be taken into account when you set rent prices for the houses. Because quote-unquote "affordable housing", where you're putting the brunt of the cost for the energy inefficiency onto the renters, who can least afford to pay astronomical energy bills, is unacceptable. So that, we need accountability for landlords so that that split incentive, where the landlord gets the benefit of the tax credits, but the renter has to pay for energy inefficiency. That is something that we should work to resolve.
Excellent point. You made a couple of good points. The first being that somebody could advertise, quote-unquote, "Low rents", but if you're paying $400 a month for energy, I mean, all that low. And the second point you're making is that if the government helps a landlord, that benefit is going to be translated back to the person who's renting the unit, right? And those are very good points. Other questions? All right, let's, with Kate, Kate? All right, fine. She's wearing a very nice t-shirt, so let's scroll.
Yes, Alice reads from Putney, Vermont. Speaking of Vermont economy, and I agree about the low-income housing, we also need childcare. We cannot attract young families without adequate childcare, and there simply is not enough. It needs to be subsisted. Thank you so much.
Well, you're absolutely, I mean, just in, in one second, talked about two issues that don't get the attention that they deserve. And one is, not just in Vermont, or at least in many parts of Vermont, Chittenden County for sure, the high cost of rental housing. But you've got an affordable housing crisis all across this country. In California, I don't know. The number of people who are now sleeping out on the streets, including people who work for a living. I was just in Disneyland last week, not to meet with Mickey Mouse, but to point out that the workers there earn wages that are so low in this profitable corporation, that many of them actually were sleeping out in tents or sleeping out in their homes. So the issue of affordable housing is a major crisis. And the issue of childcare that was just raised. I've got a little bit of good news, is that despite Trump and the Republican leadership, for a variety of reasons, I will not bore you with, we were able to push through a budget which almost doubled funding for the childcare development black rant poker, something I worked for a while. But that's, that's not enough. It is, and your point is well-taken, that in this state, working people cannot find decent, quality, affordable childcare. And given the fact that every psychologist who studies the issue knows that zero through four are the most important years intellectually and emotionally, then it's just absolutely insane. And all over the world, intelligent governments are providing universal affordable childcare for working families. That is exactly what we have got to do. But, you know, like everything else, whether it's childcare, whether it's energy, whether it's affordable housing, the priorities that now exist in Washington are absolutely backwards. So you talk about affordable housing, massive cuts. If Trump were to get his way, and I don't think he will, massive cuts for affordable housing. Secretary of HUD now wants to raise rents for the poorest people living in public housing by 20%.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, you know, we're fighting those fights, but the issue is priorities. So you invest in energy, you invest in housing, you invest in childcare, you invest in infrastructure. Of course you do. Those are the struggles that we have right now. Maybe just want to do more questions here. Kate, you ready to climb to say? I've got a lot of hands over there.
Ethan's to your left.
Oh, okay. Ethan, you got somebody there? Okay.
We all know about credit scores. Can Vermont lead the way? That each family would have an energy score, which would be comprised of their home audit number and also the transportation number.
An interesting concept, I have to say. And the score would result in what, if you had a good score? Tax rate, for example?
The credit score has revolutionized lending and other things, where you can present a, this could transfer with the sale of a home. It would be a uniform gauge of what is good by and what is not.
Good, okay. Sound good. Are you going to have a question up there? Yeah.
Thank you, Senator Sanders, and to all of the other panelists for being here today, and for all the work that you're doing on behalf of the environment. Is it Ms. Wolf? You mentioned that you became particularly keen on this issue as a, as a student at Middlebury. And as a teacher for 30 years, the subject of education is very important to me. And so I was wondering, I'm going to make an assumption that at the middle school and secondary levels in Vermont, the subject of climate change is a part of the curriculum. I don't know if that's valid or not, but I'll make that assumption. But this, the, the main point is, to what degree, or do any of you know, to what degree are schools, elementary, middle, and secondary, taking this initiative to heart and doing, rather than speaking about the potential solutions for global warming, and actively engaging in transforming their own energy systems into alternative energy? Thank you.
Yeah, I have a great story to relate about the St. Albans School District. The schools have a unique position in that they both are responsible for their facilities and all the energy associated with that, and transportation. But also, they have these online that they're responsible for. The St. Albans School District has made a lot of investments in their buildings, including solar, but also just energy efficiency investments, and are seeing the benefits of that every day. And the taxpayers in St. Albans also are seeing the benefits of that. And also, they take advantage of a service that Efficiency Vermont supports called VEEP, Vermont Energy Education Program, which is available to any school in Vermont, and also, community groups like Girl Scouts and things like that. And the VEEP program helps kids understand energy use, energy production, and really gets them started on energy engineering concepts to create, you know, the path for future citizenship in our energy conversations that are required. So the, some school districts really are taking this to heart and doing a great job. And any school district that takes advantage of the VEEP program is, you know, doing the right thing for our kids.
Well, just to answer your question, a number of years ago, when earmarks, which I'm a big fan of, were allowed, we brought a not insignificant sum of money into the state to do exactly what you're talking about. And what we did is brought solar, in most cases, to a number of schools around the state, and they tied the solar into their curriculum. So they were going to have the measurements there, saying how much energy was being generated on a given day, and it became an integral part of their science curriculum. And save, you know, they saved money for the schools as well. I think we are probably out of time, because I want to keep the program going. So let me thank the panelists for their excellent presentation. And the resource fair results. So thank you.